Because of some loans that were taken out by the organization. The net assets is the net worth of the organization. Total net assets, two hundred and forty-one thousand eight sixty-one. The unrestricted net assets were two sixteen eight sixty-one, which represents about three months of organization expenditures. So it's hit the three-month level. It would be good if that were a higher number, but it is. You know, I always say three to six months for a government or an organization. The smaller you are, probably the more that needs to be high. The next statement on page nine is the statement of revenues expenses, called the statement of activities. So in this year, the grant type revenue was, and donations was six oh seven, six thirty-five, which was about an eleven thousand decrease from the prior year. The revenue earned through operations was three ten four sixty-six. So the total support and revenue was nine eighteen one oh one. When you look at other income, a hundred and six thousand four fifty-three, a substantial amount of that. In this one year, the organization received PPP loan, paycheck protection plan loan of little over eighty thousand, and they earned that. It was converted to grant revenue in this year by properly expending it. The total expenses were nine sixty-nine five oh nine. So in this year, there was a decrease in net assets of fifty-one thousand four oh eight, which decreased the net assets to the two forty-one eight sixty-one, which again, the net assets represent about three months of organization expenses. The next statement on page ten shows the line items of expenses and also shows the categorization between program services, animal rescue and control and management in general. And you can see that compared to the prior year, expenses did increase. And the main increase was probably up in the payroll area. It increased almost a hundred thousand dollars. So there was additional salaries. And you can look at the other various line items. The next statement on page eleven is the statement of cash flows. The prior statements were based on accrual accounting, which is required. And this statement I kind of described as showing the change in the cash in the checkbook. And that while there was an accounting loss, cash actually increased in this year by seventy-eight thousand four thirty-four, which brought up for that three months. After that, our notes and disclosures. I've just looked at a couple. On page fourteen is a table that shows the capital fixed assets of the organization. It costs there six seventy-nine eight twenty-three. Cumulate depreciation, three seventy-five four four three. So the net fixed assets are three oh four three eighty. It shows those your assets are about fifty-five percent depreciated. But you can see there was construction in progress and there was some asset increases, capital asset increases during the year. On page fifteen is note ten that describes the debt of the organization. And in this year, the organization received a loan, which was part of the COVID nineteen relief funds from the SBA in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It has a, it's repayable over thirty years. And it has a fixed interest rate of two point seven five percent. So it has very generous terms. They had a loan for a security system. The balance at the end of the year, twenty-two eight seventy-five. And they had a vehicle cargo van loan, balance being twenty-two six twenty-five, owed at the, or owed at the end of the year, twenty-one three one nine. And again, I described the PPP loan. They received a PPP loan under the CARES Act in the amount of eighty thousand seven hundred. They properly spent it and it was converted to grant revenue during the year. Okay, so financially, their cash was greater. They had about three months' worth of expenses on hand at the end of the year. And so they were a stable, financially a stable operation. On page nineteen and twenty is our report regarding audit procedures required by government auditing standards. These procedures go beyond numbers, include internal control of financial reporting, compliance with laws, regulations, policies of the board of directors. In this report, there's only one, which I call a disclosure finding and is found in basically all of our smaller governmental nonprofit clients. It basically says that the organization does not have a professional accountant on hand who could prepare this full report and all of the required notes, which to me is not a negative finding. Page twenty-one is the management letter. And in the management letter, we include findings, recommendations that are not necessarily material to the financial statements, but areas with which we wish to make the organization aware. And again, because of all the, three years audits were completed in the span of just a few months. Of the findings basically are the same as were in the prior audits. We have reviewed these with the organization staff and board. And so one finding is that auditors, and this is called the audit trail, like to be able to pick a single cash receipt received, trace it to a specific bank deposit and trace it into the bank and know that it has been timely deposited, which should be, you know, every day, always by the end of the week. And we were not able to do that for each of the three audits. For credit card expenditures, we found there was inadequate support for all the charges on the credit cards. And again, there should be a control, a process whereby when you get the credit card statement, there is an invoice. There's a slip. There's something that fully describes and shows as being approved each credit card charge. And this again, was a finding, a carryover finding. And then documentation and authorizations. For every expenditure made by the organization, there should be an approval process. And that approval supervisory approval process should be documented on the invoice or on the payroll or on the paycheck. And again, and that was a recurring finding again for the three years. On page twenty-three, twenty-four is a required communication between the organization and our firm. That basically states that we were given finally access to all the information documents that we requested and we had no disagreements with the Humane Society staff regarding the conduct of the audit. On page twenty-five is the management's response to the audit. And you can read it, but it basically states that they are now aware of the findings and have taken steps to correct them during the year we're in. Again, it's almost in the 2021. So any questions of the board?
Board, do we have any questions, Mr. Powell? Thank you, Mr. Powell.
The, 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 uh, I wouldn't say unauthorized use, but the, the, the way the credit card was being used, was it just a minor offense?
Well, it's
Doing POs of what, what, what was the credit card used for?
Okay, we did not document any credit card charges that were illegal, inappropriate. There just wasn't an audit trail to show that every line item of expenditure was approved and there was a equivalent invoice for each one of those purchases.
Good.
And it's not an untypical finding in smaller organizations, but it's very, very important. Now, you have to, you can't operate without credit cards in today's world, but you need just as much control over the credit card as you do the checkbook.
Okay. That's all I have for you. Somebody else? Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Great, yes. Thank you for the early time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is one of the things that we had to be done before we, we let FAL sit down and negotiate a new contract with, with this organization. So we have been descended this, this audit now. I guess the board have to take action whether we authorize FAL to enter into negotiation with, with them. Am I correct?
Mr. Chair, I thought that we at a previous meeting, we're going to set a workshop for this. Or did we set the workshop or we put it to the beginning of the year?
We've not set the workshop yet. You wanted to get the
We were waiting for the audit to set the workshop. So I think maybe the, the, the correct action would be, you know, to set that workshop.
So what day do y'all want to have the workshop?
Well, give me, give me, uh, give me, uh, the substance of the workshop that we're going to be doing.
So the substance of the workshop is, you know, to, to me personally, not dove into animal shelter, shelter a whole lot before, when all this came up about contract renewal. It's clear that, you know, there's two facets to our operation. There's animal control and then there's animal, animal services. And we as a board, with feedback from our community, need to decide, you know, how, how much are we going to fund? I mean, and I'm, and if, and if the feedback of our communities, we're going to fund them both, we're going, that's good. But, you know, that's always been the, that's always been the, the, where confusion lies is when the contract was set, we set a contract way back. They were setting a contract for animal control. And it's clear that you, you got both facets of the operation. If you're going to have a no kill county, you've got to have both facets. So that the discussion needs to be had. And we need to be clear moving forward. We're either going to agree to fund and do both of them or we're going to go a different route. But, you know, from, from, from this contract forward, that needs to be made clear. So I would, you know, urge all you to talk to your constituents, how they, they feel about it. You know, you may get the feedback, hey, we still want to stay in no kill county. We don't mind taxpayer funds going to the animal services side. But, you know, even in this audit, those two things are not separated. They're kind of one operation. And I don't know that there's a way you do separate. But I think that discussion needs to be had by this board because I don't think it's ever been had. And, you know, the contract needs to be clear going forward. So we're not dealing with this confusion and this month to month. And, you know, we need to decide as a board what we're going to do based on feedback from our constituents. So the workshop needs to be advertised. That needs to be the meat and potatoes of it. And we need to have a comment there.
And what are, and what are our options for animal control? That always needs to be discussed.
Well, yeah, I, yeah. I, I've been having that, that comment, that conversation with, 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 with not only people in my, in my district, but people that I know associated with, with, with the organization also. And it's, it's far as me and, and what I, the feedback I get is that somebody going to have to show me what's the benefit of the county getting back in animal control. I, I just don't see us doing it. We tried it in the past and it didn't work. And somebody got to show me why to work doing it again. It, 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 it just, people donate money to where it's set up now, where if we ran it, they won't donate the money to us.
And, and I, and I agree without, I mean, I wish probably shouldn't be getting too deep into discussions. Also, in looking at their budget this year, they've added a veterinarian and she's added a lot more revenue to their, to operations. Well, you know, you don't, you don't get that aspect either. Those are all things to talk about. But the main issue is, you know, we've got them, we've, we've got to decide because this contract was set up to do animal control and we are doing more than animal control. And rightfully so, I believe personally rightfully so, we're doing more than animal control. But, you know, that's a decision this board needs to make and that needs to be defined in contract because currently it's not.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I have, I have, I have some questions, concerns about animal control that need to be addressed in this workshop to make sure that we, we are all on the same page. If we, we stay with the concept that we have now, but we got to have a better line of communication on animal control.
Well, they obviously can't, I don't think either of their missions exist without county funding both. I don't think the county can say, we, you move from separate everything and just fund animal services. I think the mission of the Humane Society bleeds over into, I mean, animal control. I think the mission bleeds over to animal services. So if, you know, if we're funding them, we're funding some animal services. How much of that we're willing to fund? How much we're willing to put on donations? And can they exist on that? But it's got to be something that works. I mean, it's
Ten troll?
Mr. Witt, I'd, I'd make the, or board, I'll make the motion that we have a workshop on January sixth, be the first Thursday of January. And I'd make recommendation, recommendation that we just have them join to the meeting. That give David and them time to schedule a meeting in such a way where we're not overloading.
But so you want to make it before the commissioner meeting or?
I would. A couple hours before, that actually gives everybody an opportunity to email. It's going to, I'm sure it's going to be an issue where a lot of constituents would like to have their say in it one way or the other. So it's up to y'all before or after.
Two o'clock, let's make it two o'clock. David, are you good with that?
Yes, sir. And, and I'll second that motion, but clarification there. When we advertise this workshop, you need to be made clear. We're, we're talking about taxpayer funding of animal services. Control and services currently, you know, we're only control. We need to, you know, and so we can get the feedback of our citizens, hey, this is something we want y'all to do. And
Yeah, okay. All right, I got a motion.
Let me, let me understand this now. The taxpayers have always funded animal control. Since I've been on board.
Exactly, animal control. But there's a lot of services, animal services, where the long-term keeping of animals and maintenance of the animals that wasn't initially in the, in the contract. You had a humane society mission and what the county wanted is its mission. And how much are we, how much animal control do we fund versus animal services? It's not spelled out. And for years, I've heard commissioners say, well, I want to know what you're spending on this side and what you're spending on this side. I don't know if they can do that because I think their mission bleeds together. But that's why I think we need to have the workshop and, and be sure we're clear with our taxpayers. We're funding both. How much of both are you willing to fund?
Well, from the comments that I've heard from the last meetings on this, they are funding everything through one, one account. Well, all it shows that, yeah. So, okay, so we've got a, we got a workshop. We got a motion in a second for a workshop, August the sixth at two P M.
January.
I mean, I'm sorry, it's January.
I'm going back in time.
January sixth, what time?
January sixth at two P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. David, you had that, August sixth?
Yep.
I'm still saying August, January sixth, two P M, I'm sorry. I don't know, I got something planned for August.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I ask one of the people that dog, you know, animal control a question? If, if I get a call in the middle of the night and somebody's, do I need somebody to come up or can I just ask?
I, I would say that for the workshop.
Okay, okay. Because I, I've been getting them lately and I don't know what to do about it.
Yeah, we, let's just do it all.
Walk next door to Keith's house and wake him up.
That's probably what I'm going to do. There's my answer, I'm done.
Yeah, let's don't get off too deep into it tonight. Let's do that at the workshop. Okay. Let's, let's move on to, uh, Mr. Foreman, make sure hospital authority.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief update to make sure all members of the commissioner are up to date on things. A fourth member was appointed to the Lake Shore Hospital Authority by the governor back on November fifth. Most of y'all know Don Kennedy. Because there are now four members appointed, the authority is capable of creating a quorum to do its business. And so by operation of the receivership order, it's dissolved. So I just wanted you guys to know you're not going to be obligated to do any more Lake Shore Hospital Authority business. And at the time I wrote the memo, the court had not entered the order, but the court did enter the order the next day.
Did you say they appointed Don Kennedy?
They did. They did.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. Oh, I, I'm glad the governor finally got, got around to doing that. Like I said, I, I think the Lake Shore Hospital Authority should be over that committee right now until they get the situation solved. Okay, uh, Mr. Kraus?
Yes, this is just a brief announcement. The planning and zoning board has a vacancy coming up. That their term that will expire January seventh, 2022. So we are advertising to fill that position. The advertisements will be accepting applications up till February, or December eleventh, 2021. So if you know anybody that is interested in applying to be on the planning and zoning board and zoning board of adjustments, have them either pull it off the website or contact Lisa Roberts in our office and we'll be happy to give them an application they can fill out. We encourage everyone to please participate in your local government and please join us and apply for this, this opening. Thank you.
David, on that topic, in our joint meeting with the college, the city county college, the recommendation I think was made by Commissioner Hollingworth. Is there a way we can change the makeup of this organization to permanently appoint a representative to be changed upon their discretion? Having a representative of the college?
I will refer that to the attorney.
This is, this is not an advisory board. This is a board that actually holds part of your sovereign power. And, and so you don't generally have those kind of held seats on these kind of boards. Doesn't mean you don't have the discretion to make the appointment, but I think it's important for you to go through the appointment process rather than just take a seat and hand it over to another.
So on that advisory board, is that possible?
When the board sits in advisory capacity, this is not an advisory board. But yeah, like economic development, you hold one for the city, hold one for the college. That's perfectly appropriate because they're just exercising advisory powers. But when they're actually exercising your sovereign power, which is what the planning and zoning board, board of adjustments do, you know, there's things they do that don't even come back to y'all. That's when they're exercising your power.
Got you.
You want to have that appointment process be followed.
And I want to make it clear, I said, I said you could put somebody on the board, but also go down and just be there. I mean, they can do either one, you know, they can have somebody there every time. Then they know what's going on. I didn't really mean they had to get somebody on the board, but if they're just there to observe, they'll know what's happening.
And we're also trying to get more public participation in this. So we started limiting the, the terms, how long they can stay on the board.
In, in fact, the board did that several years ago, created a two-term limit. And what's happened is that's now starting to come around. You're starting to see those terms run out. I do think the gentleman holding that seat right now is eligible for reappointment, but that doesn't mean he will be. It all has to come back to this board for y'all to decide what to do.
And for the board, one of the themes the board asked us when they said they were looking for new blood, they were looking for diversity. They said they wanted to make sure that there was a process in which they could verify that everybody did get due consideration. And so we are establishing a review committee that will review all of the applicants and report back to this board their recommendations. So it won't be, there'll be an actual review process.
Well, you know, we've talked about before about the process of advertising. I would make the recommendation to staff to reach out to the regular club, lines club, such as that, at least mention that at their monthly meetings. I think would be a good avenue to kind of get the word out.
That's good.
I agree. And David, have we looked at anything yet on any kind of a social media page for the county?
We will post on social media. We right now only have a couple of social media pages, one for the tourist development council and one for, I believe, emergency management.
I think it'd be beneficial to start a job, a job, work board on the social media side for jobs available in the county. I mean, a lot of people, that's how they get all their news and everything, information on everything now through social media.
We can start Facebook page, let Toby edit it.
There you go.
I'm your man.
Let you manage it.
Most people. Ministers, before, before, before we jump in that hole, on behalf of the Florida Association of County Attorneys, please don't. The public records requirements that go with those kinds. Now, if you do turn on Facebook, just make sure your commenting is limited.
Joel's going to want to have to renegotiate his contract when they do that.
There, there's, there's whole classes at Florida Association County Attorneys. They say just don't do it.
There, there is a way to establish a page with no commenting. So you just, you just one-way communication, you're getting news out there.
That's right, it has to be one-way, no comment.
Yeah. Mr. Dobbs?
Did any commissioners, we got a few articles for you this evening. The first one. Z oh five nine eight, ordinance twenty twenty-one twelve. It's a request by Kathy Polara, agent for Donna L. Polara, revocable trust agreement to amend the zoning atlas of the land development regulations. They proposed to amend it from residential, single-family two to rural residential for portion of tax parcel number zero eight two four five dash zero zero three. This is in District Five, Commissioner Murphy's district. And the planning and zoning board held a public hearing on October twenty-eighth, 2021 and voted to recommend an approval.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing at this time. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing. Which Murphy is in your district.
I'll make a motion to accept Z oh five nine eight, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twelve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you want to move ahead?
Yes, sir. The commissioner doesn't mind the next two or companion items. So if I can make one presentation for the both and then the commissioner make their motions. The first one is CPA oh two three eight, ordinance twenty twenty-one thirteen. It's a request by Carol Chadwick for RFD Lands LLC as owner to amend the future landing snap of the conference of plan from residential, very low density to industrial for tax parcel numbers zero five zero four eight dash zero 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 and zero five zero four eight dash zero zero zero. And the companion item is Z oh five nine nine, ordinance twenty twenty-one fourteen. And it is the basically the same amendment, but proposing to change these official zoning atlas from rural residential to industrial. This is in District One, Commissioner Williams district. And the planning and zoning board held a public hearing on both of those items on October twenty-eighth, 2021 and voted to recommend approval for both items to the B C C, the board championship.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing for this at this time. Anyone here to speak for or against? Not seeing anyone, Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, this is important, this is important.
Mr. Chairman, this is important. This is important uh, uh, land use change for this area. In the near future, uh, you all will see the the benefits of changing this parcel to industrial. So I've moved to take the uh, planning and zoning board recommendation to uh, approve the uh, requests.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have is D zero.
Brandon, do you need separate motions for those two?
If if you, uh, you if if you feel I do, yes.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, that first one was for zero, Z zero five nine nine. If we can have another motion for zero, Z zero six hundred.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Have a have motion.
Hold on, Brandon, what you think?
The that was Z oh five nine nine, the other is CPA oh two three eight.
Okay, very good. CPA oh two three eight. Madam Clerk, if we can have a motion for that.
So move again.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next item I have is Z zero six zero zero ordinance twenty twenty-one fifteen. It's also a request by Carol Chadwick, agent for We Care Preschool and Daycare. And proposes to amend the official zoning atlas of the land development regulations from environmentally sensitive area two. To commercial neighborhood for tax parcel numbers. Zero three five five two dash zero 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 and zero three five five two dash zero zero one. This is in District Two, Commissioner Forge district. The planning and zoning board held a public hearing on the proposed. Application on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one and voted to recommend approval to this board.
I'll open public hearing at this time. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone. I'll make a motion to approve.
Praying one question before we vote. On this uh, particular item, uh, cornered me rocky there. During the planning of this and the proposal, uh, you know, the uh, issue you got there when they're dropping kids off or what have you. With this expansion, is that taken in consideration? Are they planning on doing anything to try to relieve that hazard there?
I don't know the full extent of what, but it's my understanding they actually want to sell this site here. And and sell it to somebody who wants to do something more appropriate of that site. And the next companion id- our next item before you is actually a property where they want to relocate. Which will, if they do, that would definitely have that intersection.
But we'll have to approve a site plan for this at once they propose the building.
Well, the the planning and zoning board will.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, but that 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 site plan will go out to all staff members, um, that's part of the review committee and including. Uh, Mr. Kirby and Mr. Williams, the county engineer. And uh, they will definitely be reviewing that for traffic and.
And I know y'all do. I just emphasize that's a bad, that's a bad deal out there.
And if they, if she does what she told me she was gonna do, which would, because she can't expand there.
Correct.
So she wants to move from that facility to this next facility. Which would completely eliminate a lot of traffic at that location, because if you have more. Of a commercial neighborhood use, you're gonna have less traffic at that location than a daycare. Especially your peak hour traffic.
Doing it, doing it, of course, for land use change, the uh, uh, the site plan is not part of the application.
I know, but I'm just saying, they, once they, if they change what they're doing, then when they build something, they'll have to spend a minute in the site plan that time.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, uh, to make sure that that, I I might have missed it, but did you close the public hearing on this before you made the motion?
I did, yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that somebody read the tape and say, well, that's not official, because the public hearing wasn't closed.
Yeah, we did. We did. I called up here. Which Murphy, you have any more questions?
Good.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion and a second? I don't have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And then the next item is uh, Z zero six oh one. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, which is also an application by Carol Chadwick. For We Care Preschool and Daycare. To change the uh, zoning from environmentally sensitive area two to commercial neighborhood. For tax parcel zero three five four five dash zero zero zero. This is in District Five, Commissioner Murphy's district. And the planning and zoning board held a public hearing on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one and voted to recommend approval. As you know, the district line is rather on two forty there, so it kind of jumps districts, but. This is the location where she wants to relocate. Um, it's a little bit bigger site. It's uh, got a lot more room. And that Wengate Street. Uh, will get the traffic away from two forty and forty-seven. So overall, it would definitely be a much better site for relocating the daycare than trying to have all that in and out of traffic right at that intersection.
Okay, we'll open. We'll open public hearing at this time. Anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone. Commissioner Murphy?
I make a motion to accept Z oh six one ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners, and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, this time we'll get a, can I get a, oh, Mr. Foreman, adoption here for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. This evening, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty is the formal adoption of the redistricting map that the board previously approved. There's a short uh, procedural history of the uh, ordinance itself in the memo that was provided. Uh, essentially, this is the last step in the process that allows us to go to publication. And provide the new redistricting map to the supervisor of elections. Uh, so I'd request opening of the public hearing, uh, and uh, in moving to adoption.
Okay, at this time we'll open the public hearing. For uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty, adoption of twenty twenty-one redistricting map. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt order number twenty twenty-one dash twenty.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and two seconds. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I get approval of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, can we get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. Mr. Foreman, I guess we'll carry on with you.
Yes, sir. They didn't feel like y'all had enough of me yet. The first item I have under discussion action items is an interlocal agreement with the town of Fort White that was developed with myself and Mr. Kerberline. Uh, it's my understanding the town discussed this last night, but has not yet taken action on it. They'll be taking action on it their last meeting, or their next meeting, excuse me. Uh, essentially, this is an outline of the agreement. That was discussed at the uh, joint meeting between the town and the county, uh, down there in Fort White some time ago. This agreement is a preliminary agreement, but it's sufficient. For North Florida Professional Services to go to Tallahassee and obtain funding, uh, in the manner they had described to you at that joint meeting. So I would request the board approve this, uh, understanding that it's still up to the town to uh, to approve it as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve interlocal agreement with town of Fort White wastewater.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I'd like to say a little bit on this. Last week, we got the news that we uh, we were awarded, or town of Fort White was awarded. Little over five point three million for a wastewater facility in the town of Fort White. I think we owe a lot of. Lot of credit to Commissioner Williams, who had the foresight twelve years ago. To start a water and sewer system in Ellisville. And got the ball rolling for the south end of the county for water and sewer. And uh, I think this is going, this is an expansion of starting that facility in in Ellisville. And uh, like I say, I just want to say, I thank all the other commissioners and Commissioner Williams. For supporting this project and helping us get funding, helping the town get funding for this. And uh, I think it's gonna be a good future for future expansion in the south end of the county. Commissioner Wheat, Commissioner Witt has been very beneficial in this. Mr. David Kraus, uh, Mayor Ronnie Frazier. Greg Bailey with Bailey Bishop and Lane or North Florida Professional Service. Like I said, we just owe a lot of credit to a lot of people for helping us get this started. But it all started twelve years ago. When this, I wasn't on the board then, but they decided that they needed to go into the water and sewer business and we've expanded from that. And uh, like I say, Mr. Commissioner Williams has been a strong advocate. For sewer in the south end of the county. And I just say, I like to thank all y'all for that. And this time I call for a vote. Or a motion or.
You already got it.
I got a motion and a second. Call for a vote. Like I say, this has been something I've been working on for three years now. We've all been working on it and. Looks like it's finally coming to fruition and, like I say, I'm 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 really excited about it. So this time I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll go ahead, move forward.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is an amendment to the lease agreement for Duval Place. Uh, you'll recall during budget season, the board uh, authorized, or or excuse me, appropriated money to harden. The supervisor of elections office facilities over at Duval Place. In the process of of uh, of getting that scope of work prepared, uh, and trying to authorize the work. Uh, in discussions with county manager, uh, really didn't feel like, uh, it was going to be tenable for us to get through a um. A solicitation for the hiring of the contractor. As you guys know, the owners of Duval Place prefer Chum O'Neil. To perform the general contracting work there. Um, last time we done a workaround, uh, but it didn't seem to be something that we're gonna work this time, so. The county manager's renegotiated with representatives from uh, the trust. To essentially change the 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 terms of the base rent. And then in exchange for that increase in the base rent, they'll basically bill to suit according to our scope of work. So they'll pay their money, they'll get repaid over the next several years with the adjustment in the base rent. It is a a four dollar adjustment in the base rent. You can see it there in paragraph one or section one of the uh, amendment. It would adjust from ten dollars per annum, per square feet, square foot to fourteen dollars per annum per square foot.
And this is for the supervisor of elections?
This will allow sufficient funding for the supervisor of elections office to be hardened in accordance with the budget that you set. Uh, there is a small grant, I think fifty thousand dollars, that will have to work. Uh, probably run that through a procurement, but we have some items uh, isolated that we can handle with that money. And if I've said anything incorrect, please correct me, Mr. Kraus.
No, that is correct.
Chairman, I move that we uh, take the recommendation. It's a clean way to do it.
Clean way to do it. I agree. And that a motion?
Second.
Uh, Chair, before we take a vote, uh, as I did before, uh. I uh, do a lot of work for the contractor of uh, conversation here and I'll recuse from this vote just to send a signal. And what he is going to be doing on the hardening of that project, I will not be involved in in any sort fashion whatsoever. But I do do Chum O'Neil's work, as all you know. And uh, there will be work done on the exterior of the building that the owners and the management company. Are solely paying and the county in no form, fashion whatsoever be sending any money of that. But with that being said, I will recuse from this vote.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Murphy. Okay, at this time we'll call a vote then. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank y'all. Okay, let's move forward. Oh, go ahead.
You you abstain, right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Murphy, you got it. I get one. Make sure it's quick handed.
Yeah.
Should be four of them.
Okay.
The last item, Commissioners, is relatively simple. Back in two thousand seventeen, there was a bid awarded to uh, Bubba's Site Prep to transport sand for the landfill. It took a significant amount of time to reach a similar agreement with uh, Nutrien, which is gonna be providing the sand. And it was discovered as we were comparing the contracts that the terms don't line up. So all we're asking for is that the Bubba Site Prep um, uh, agreement. For transporting the sand, which will be on all the same terms and conditions, merely matching time. With what uh, we've been able to obtain from uh, from Nutrien, uh, white springs. And so I'd ask for a motion of that effect.
I make a motion to accept bid number two thousand, two zero one seven dash.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to capture the add-on item now or wait till then?
You can, if you want.
Okay. So I have five items for your consideration and one walk on. First item, the county received two bids for our annual fencing contract. The apparent low bidder did not meet the requirements, basically did not complete the scheduled values. And the second one was extremely high compared to market enterprise today. We're requesting a motion to reject all bids and readvertise.
I move to reject all bids and readvertise.
Second.
Kevin, is this just the fencing contract as a whole or is it specific job?
No, sir. This is our annual fencing contract.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, thank you, sir. The second item is our Lime Rock. This is our annual Lime Rock bid. We received one bid from Beaver Bulk at twelve dollars and fifty cent per ton. That is lined up with market value. We're requesting a motion to approve the bid and contract of Beaver Bulk Inc. in the amount of twelve fifty per ton.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Okay. This is a little tricky item. So in oh fourteen, the board approved the purchase of the following equipment to conduct the renovations of the C H S football field. For those of you on the board at that time, and for those of you that were not. We, meaning the county, went in and redid the football fields in totality. We subsoiled, excavated, mixed up what was there. We had a huge capital project. As we were doing that, the board at that time said, let's provide them with a John Deere reel mower. A P T O driven verticutter and a P T O driven fertilizer distributor. We've had a challenge annually when we do our inventory of equipment. With tracking these pieces down. So after multiple. Exercises, I'm here tonight to just basically ask this board to transfer the following equipment to Columbia County School District. And support and care of the athletic fields owned and maintained by district schedule. Basically, we bought the equipment on a permanent loan to them. We're around trying to inventory our equipment. We're having a harder time tracking it down at times. And to eliminate any controversy, one of our neighbors had some issues with inventory of equipment, and I just think it's wise to put it there on our ship.
And and commission, technically, what you're gonna do is surplus this equipment and donate it to the school district. For bookkeeping purposes. So you're surplusing it, saying you don't need any more, then you can just donate it without consideration to the school district.
We got a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion?
That's your understanding, Kevin?
Yes, sir. That is my motion. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, okay. I've just seen you eyes doing all concrete stuff. I thought you were gonna pass out.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you. At the last board meeting, on the phone, the board chose option two as it related to our Ellisville expansion wastewater treatment facility. So to refresh our memory, we went out in contract, go from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand gallons, a twenty-five thousand gallon expansion. New data pops in. We recognize no more than the time we finish up that expansion, we need to expand again. So at that time, what do you guys want to do? Do we want to approve the current contract or do we want to see that if we can win capture the? Seventy-five thousand gallon in totality within one contract? So we did that. So I reached out to the proposed contractor and they did verbally agree. That they would basically remove the mobilization item and mirror all other items on this current schedule of values. Okay? Designer permitting of the second phase up to seventy-five thousand, we've already kicked it off. It's being streamlined in order to take advantage of the existing permitting and construction timeline. timelines. First phase will be constructed with grant funds, the county match a plus or minus $150,000. If you recall, we had a little shortfall. Remaining phase constructed with county funds only. Both projects will be tracked separately in order to take the grant funds. So long story short, I reached out to the contractor, he agreed to mirror the current schedule of values, removal of mobilization with the understanding of putting a big puzzle together. Hopefully, he'll never leave the job, or depending on a lot of people make that happen, if he has to leave the job, he did agree to mirror the current mobilization as he did with other live items. Make sense?
Fair enough.
Okay. So recommend a motion, approve bid number 2021-11 and contract to SGS Contractic Services.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, traffic signal tech two. So I'm proud to say we hired a traffic tech three, which is our supervisor over that department a couple of years ago. We have successfully eliminated all that several hundred thousand dollars worth of contract work as relates to our red lights. So the traffic signal technician two is necessary for the maintenance of our streetlights, traffic signals, school zones. IMSA F.D.O. requirements stipulate that only certified personnel are permitted to repair, program, or monitor signals. So we currently have, we promoted one person from our current staff, he is now a tech one. We have a tech three as a supervisor. What we've recognized is basically our tech three cannot take a vacation or cannot be sick anytime, or we're gonna go back to contract workout. So I'm requesting this board to give us a traffic signal tech position two with a starting rate of $23 an hour or $48 an hour.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, in my walk on, Mr. Chair, is we go, and I, this just got brought to my attention today. This is a Commissioner Murphy's district, and I have discussed it with him. Down on 41 South at the intersection of 252 Columbia High School on the west side where the Dollar General is. In '07, a private road was built in there, and it's pretty much with exception of the Dollar General, that's what it serves. An apartment complex just opened up. What we've recognized, once it brought my attention immediately, there are three significant po-ohs. When I say significant, very significant.
I've had calls.
So I spoke with our attorney today, I spoke with Commissioner Murphy. Here's your challenge, we have private road assessment programs out there. Owner of the private road is deceased. His businesses, affairs are now in a trust. So even though the folks out there are interested in entering the private road assessment program, there's a lot of paper for, for mangled around before that can happen. So I'm requesting permission from this board. I don't know if we call it public safety, public interest, but now you had zero cars going down this road, and you've got a pretty good sized apartment complex with multiple trips a day. So if I can get permission to go repair these bad po-ohs and stop, and hopefully they'll have time to work their problems out. So that is my request to enter a private road to patch the three large asphalt repairs.
And Kevin did reach out to me today, and I'm fully aware of it. Commissioner Hollisworth, as he can call me from, some of his friends calling, but, but I definitely make that motion to go ahead and.
It is, it's dangerous.
Why do, why do we allow a parking complex to be built with a private road being in?
Mr. Attorney?
Well, yeah, it's not about.
Same question, sir.
Yeah, it's not really about allowing the developer reserve the road privately, which, you know, they were allowed to do when they did it. Mr. Kirby and I were talking earlier today, probably in the commercial context, private roads never gonna work out because you end up with something like Ring Court, right? Where you have all these high dollar businesses back there trying to get work done, the road starts deteriorating, they're just flat out too busy. So they start calling us, and long story short, we end up taking the road anyway. So when we do these commercial subdivisions, we probably need to adopt a rule says we're not gonna allow private roads. Same thing we're trying to do with our residential subdivisions now. You know, just if we're gonna end up with them anyway, let's just take them up front, understand where the money's gonna come from, where it's gonna go to. This is just one, Commissioner Williams has been like this '07, and then when they came in to develop, you know, it's their road, it's like having a driveway. They had it, so they were allowed to do it.
And like you're saying, I want Mr. Kirby to look at the road, make sure it's right because we got private roads that were built that lasted a year, and so I wanna make sure.
So this is gonna stay a private road for now. But I think what Mr. Kirby's talking about is we're gonna either bring them through the private road assessment program where they start paying a little bit of extra money on their tax bill, or if we can get the road in right condition and they want a dedicated accounting, we can do that too.
And Counselor, they're willing to do either one, it's because of the situation of the deceased, it's just not real settled.
If he was alive, he'd take care of himself.
Yes.
So what we're doing is going to there and, and, and fixing where it can be usable, and then what happened when it terrified again?
Commissioner, I'm just simply requesting permission tonight to go and fix three dangerous, when I say po-ohs, I mean crap po-ohs. Let's go fix those and allow the folks out there, they're in the process of trying to get some options such as private road assessment, dedication to the county. This is just a situation that's popped up.
Yeah. Okay.
Kind of, kind of bridge them over to where they can fix it.
They are working to, 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 to fix those roads and bring them up to public standards or, or, or bring them up to standards and dedicate that to the county.
Either dedicate them or go into the private road assessment program, but either way, we would start taking care of them and the, and the money that.
And they pay for it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Kevin, if you don't mind, while you do, I think we need to vote on this.
Yeah, we do, we need to vote on it.
Do we have a second?
Do I, I have a motion, I don't know if I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
While we're talking about unique private roads, Kevin's been doing everything he can to help me with this fiasco that we've inherited over the years way before my time at the Cannon Creek Airport. And of course, I know Ron was here back when that fiasco started. And me and Kevin, our staff has done everything they can legally do. We got a situation. You come off Sister Welcome Road, you go past right away, you're on private property until you go across First Street to the right, Lockheed, I think it is, right, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
And then all of a sudden, all my constituents that live in the back are all on public roads. We've got a situation there where, I'll say it, a yahoo designed that place out there, and it's a, it's a, it's a mess. Here's what's happening. The water comes down off the hill, goes through these ditches, ultimately supposed to end up at Sister's Welcome Road. And what's happened, we can't go in there and maintain the ditches because it's private property, and there's a cover under the taxiway. And, you know, it's against everything that we've always stood for. But my problem is, all the constituents that live on public road in the back of that complex or neighborhoods, you know, I, I gotta look out for their public safety also. And in rain time, I mean, after the rain's over with, water's constantly running across that road because it won't filter through the ditches because of, and when I first coming off of five years ago, mistakenly, the county went in there and cleaned the ditch. And like Kevin, me talk, he can't watch everything, you know. Go ahead.
And if I may clarify what we said right there, Mr. Murphy's exactly right, it's like a checkerboard. Private, public, private, it, it's a hot mess. And so when I say, Commissioner Murphy, we can't do that, somebody brought his attention where he did it before. We got a lot of moving parts out there. I didn't sanction it.
Yeah, exactly. Nobody was, you know, it, it was just a simple mistake, if you want to say. And, but what's happened, and I've had this, Blake is gonna try to schedule this after the first of the year because it's gonna be a major undertaking. The main 36-inch covert coming into this part of the airpark is completely rusted through the bottom, the asphalt's cracking, and what's happened, the water's sheeting across the road, going down into a corner, and Blake and them's constantly just putting as much millions in there as they can to keep it sustained until we can work it out. There are four different homeowners association that, so that tells you how crazy this guy's. But my point is, is that, all I'm asking is that, can, is there a way we can go out there and at least clean the ditches to sustain the water on that side of the street, which will, in the course, five years from now, it's probably gonna come back, we're gonna have to, somebody has to clean them again. But the cover's definitely fogged to a degree going under the taxiway. And how many feet do you think it is, Kevin, on that ditch? 300?
Maybe three, yes.
300. And that, that's all, I, like I told, I met with all the homeowners out there on Lockheed, and I told them, we, they asked me, they said, well, do whatever you can with the county to, we'll give you the road, but we still want to drive our plane on it. You can't do that, that's against the law. So I've never asked this board to do that, I'm just simply saying, all I wanna do is give Kevin and them the, the authority to go in there and clean 300-foot ditch, blow out the cover, and call it a day. And then, of course, the cover that we got to do on Sister's Welcome, that's our responsibility anyway. But the, the homeowners in this situation that's over control of the asphalt taxiway, they're gonna work with our staff to direct traffic that two, two days, whatever it is, Kevin, that need to change that cover out there. They're gonna redirect traffic out another way. Because how many people live back there, Kevin? Probably 100?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I'm just simply asking the board to step outside our bounds, clean 300-foot ditch and call it a day.
So Counselor, can we legally, you know, at, you know, can we legally move to, can we legally do this?
Yeah.
Private property, new this, I assume the private property.
And I'm hanging my hat on Joel's famous saying, I, I feel like it's a public safety issue for my constituents that live on a public road.
Is that a motion? You got a couple of things going for you here. So you have public infrastructure, which are all these public roads that are pinned in by this private road. The fact that we have this obstruction in this ditch is impounding water on our roads, correct?
Correct.
And Kevin, that's really bad for our asphalt.
Right.
Okay. So that's your public purpose, you're protecting public infrastructure. You need permission from the HOA that owns that land, but yeah, in terms of going out and actually opening up the ditch and spending money to do that, you're spending that money to protect your investment in the public roads. So I think public purpose is very clear.
So make a motion to get permission.
I'm just gonna let the commissioner.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion, draw it up how you want to, Joel, but I make that motion. But Kevin, again, I do appreciate it because our, our road department did excellent job trying to assist.
Subject to, the motion and the second was subject to the authorization of the HOA, public works will be authorized to go in and clean out those, those drains and culverts.
Correct.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kevin, I think you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Kevin, I'll get him hooked up with you, okay? Thank you.
Okay, David.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And before you get started, David, I just wanted to somebody's horn here. If you guys haven't taken the time to go out and visit the new traffic signal director and actually go in his operation, me coming from the background in that field, we made a heck of an investment, guys. And he's hooked up in Gainesville, and you would not believe the money he had saved the taxpayers of Columbia County by getting Gainesville's drop offs, if you wanna call it. You owe it to yourself to go out there, we, 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 we did good there, we did real well.
He does, he runs a top-notch shop.
Absolutely.
Mr. Crackle's very good. Well, first item I have is Project Wave, it's an economic development agreement. We're excited about Project Wave because they're wanting to bring in 50 new jobs, $15 million in capital investment and be the first tenant at the Meg, North Florida Mega Industrial Park. You know, obviously, we compete against not just other counties in the state of Florida, but we compete against other states for these projects with target industries, and everybody wants manufacturing and aviation and distribution and food and beverage. So we have to be competitive. It's a critical component to the success is to keep these projects confidential, that's why we can't really talk about much detail of what Project Wave is gonna be doing. And speed to market is very, very critical component to projects making a decision to go someplace or not, how quickly can they get in? This factory wants to come in, it is a manufacturing facility, within a 12-month window. So we have to be very competitive. Warehouser has invested more than $5.5 million to date to make NFMP ready through planning and comprehensive site due diligence, engineering, zoning permitting, economic development, marketing at a national level. They've got most of these stormwater permits pre-done in advance, all the stormwater areas have been identified. In addition, they have supported the county in seeking more than $14 million in state grants for infrastructure that we have out there. So having said all that, as part of this project, not in the economic development agreement, Warehouser has reduced the price of the land to the company for the 30 acres that they're looking for to help develop a 120,000 square foot manufacturing facility and showroom. In addition, they've agreed to clear and grub grade 105 acres to prepare for Project Wave's 30-acre site. But by doing 105 acres, not only are they preparing for Project Wave's site, that's putting in the regional stormwater ponds and making it ready for additional economic development sites as well. So to get it ready for Project Wave so that they can move in, they have to get it ready for other people as well. So they're going to be doing a lot of the site prep on this particular development. So the agreement, very simply, we will reverse Project Wave when they close on the property, a development incentive. Now, we had to base it on something, so we based it on $10,000 an acre for up to 300 acres. We're going to give that to the company, they're gonna use that money to help them develop the site, help them build their facilities. It's not going to Warehouser, it's actually going to Project Wave, that's why it's a two-party agreement and not a three-party agreement. The company will provide a capital investment between $15 million and $18 million. Within one year of the closing on the site, they have to begin vertical construction. And then county will pursue funding, and we're just committing to pursuing the funding for the rail extension because Project Wave wants to be a rail customer, and also paving a portion of North Florida Mega Industrial Parkway so that they have an entrance both on 90 and on North Florida Mega Industrial Parkway West. So what we're asking is the Board of County Commissioners to approve an economic development agreement with Project Wave for up to $300,000.
Mr. Chair, there were a couple of changes relayed to me by Project Wave late that I do want, they factor into the board's decision tonight. Instead of 15 to 18 million in terms of capital investment, it's 12 to 14 million, that does not disqualify the project from consideration. They've also taken the default interest rate from 12%, which is what we have and what you're seeing there, to 5%. Either one of those rates is a legally reasonable rate. And then everything else in the agreement is intact, so 30 acres up to, you know, $10,000 per acre up to $300,000 is the, is the meat and potatoes of it, but I wanted to make sure you had the, and those were the final numbers that were approved by Wave in terms of those numbers I just shared. If you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer them.
Explain the default.
They've signed?
Yes.
Yeah, they've signed.
So we're, we're finally getting one.
Yep.
And as you noticed probably in the paper, I think it was yesterday, it's one of the top projects for Representative Brandon to, you know, he's gonna seek funding for this road in the upcoming session. And we just need to keep the backfire. I, I feel like very confident we'll get that, but we need to be prepared to move forward if, if he doesn't, you know, but.
David in the Economic Development Council recommended this project?
This has not been before the Economic Development Advisory.
It's not been before then.
No.
Well, they're coming directly to the board for the time since we've done it.
Well, if Project Wave, to my understanding, was very eager to move forward, which is a positive as well.
Correct.
So in terms of the default rate of interest, Mr. Murphy, you mentioned that question. I had built in 12% per year. If they did not in fact develop, they needed to pay us back with that interest, they reduced that to five. Again, that is a reasonable rate of interest on, on a default. It's, they didn't reduce it to one or a half percent or something like that, sir. But that is a change in variance from what you're seeing.
The chairman, I move we take the recommendation on the, the agreement with Project Wave.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. We have another economic development project on tonight's agenda, it's Project 2120. Project 2120 is a little different than what we've done before, and this one has been before the Economic Development Advisory Board. They are going to lease existing commercial space and improve that existing commercial space. They want at least 10,000 square feet of an existing commercial space that is empty and[1745.95] Of an existing commercial space that is empty and vacant and provide three million dollars in site space improvements. They will be operational by the summer of twenty twenty-two and um. The Economic Development Advisory Board looked at it. They ran it through their scorecard. And came up with a seventy-five percent of improvements over assessed value over a six year period. Based upon, again, the score that they got on the scorecard. And so they're recommending that you approve a tax rebate. Of seventy-five percent of the improvements over the assessed value for a six year period.
Move to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great. The next one is a utility committee. Much like we have a joint city county utility committee with the city of Lake City. We thought moving forward with the town of Fort White, it would make sense for us to create a utility committee with the town of Fort White. Um the town last night at their meeting discussed it and agreed to it and felt that they wanted to do it and they appointed Mayor Frazier. Councilmember William Bishop and Town Clerk Connie Brechen to this committee and I'm we're requesting the board to appoint your members to the committee.
Board of Commissioner Whit and I both this affects our districts and I would ask you to put uh. Uh Commissioner Whit and I on this committee or vote to approve us to be on this committee. Being this is in our district. Most of the stuff is in our district. Well, all of it really will be in our district for this stuff. So this time could I get a motion?
The motion?
Okay. For me and Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And and like I said a while ago, you know, twelve years ago, when. The county decided to get into water and sewer business. And uh I think the only one was on that board, this homeless board now that's on that board at that time was Commissioner Williams. And uh he had the forty-two to see the future for Columbia County was in. A lot of it was in the Ellis Ellisville corridor and uh we want to credit him with uh. With, you know, being able to see that we needed to be in the water and sewer business and I and I think this is just an expansion of South Indian County. I think. I think we can get a lot of growth in the south end from this and uh.
Well, Mr. Mr. Chair, we know the first that the first projects that this this committee is going to take on is going to impact mine and your district. But much like the Economic Development Board, uh as this thing expands and they take on projects. In other the other districts, you know, the makeup of the board, other committees should change too. But I think it makes sense in the initial because the Ellisville expansion is is my district and some of. The Fort White outskirts are my district and it's all your district that that's appropriate, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So for the record, this will be a public board. It will be required to be publicly noticed and this will be kept. Um just, you know, just like any other public board because you have two commissioners and two town council members. And so we will publicly notice all the meetings.
David, while we're on this subject with all the economic development we've got coming down the pipe. We've got the Ellisville Fort White Water Connection. We've got the expansion. For the sewer plant Fort White. We got the new new sewer plant being built at the industrial park, got a water plant going on at industrial park. Commissioner uh Williams has touched on this before, but uh. I don't know how you're going to stay on top of all this without getting some help. For a grant administrator, what do you you want to call him? A project supervisor, a grant administrator? But uh I I think you and Kevin's going to need some help on all of these projects because they're going, a lot of them are going to be happening all at the same time, it looks like, so.
Oh, I would absolutely agree. As as you know, the plan is for the sewer plant to go out to bid in January. With a twelve month, up to a twelve month window for completion. We're hoping to get our consumptive use permit on the water plant and then have to build a water plant at the industrial park. We haven't even started on looking at and putting in lines to get from the plants to the industries, which also have to be done. So within this twelve month period. That you're talking about over the next year, there's just a lot of work.
Not only that, we're going to need to be seeking more grants for additions, y'all, this stuff.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to direct staff to do, you know, to start looking for somebody or what do we need?
I that's what I would suggest, yeah. Go ahead with Commissioner.
Yeah, I I I think uh staff need to put together a proposal. To bring back this board and one of the things that I definitely don't want a shortcoming on is our our ability to go out the branch.
Exactly.
Because that's the key to, and there's a lot of dollars out there now. And we want to make sure that we're not tied up to where we lose that ability to make sure we keep up with grants. And let staff bring us a recommendation back.
Should we look at permanent county hire versus hiring consulting on this?
Yeah. Yes.
Hopefully this is going to contend.
Hopefully.
You know.
What I can say is we can bring you back to job description for you to approve and create the position. So that we can then go out and advertise and look for somebody to bring in house.
I was just thinking if we could use consulting, if you've got multiple projects that are going to happen at at the same time. You know, you could actually have more than one man on on this, but.
I think Mr. Kirby had a comment.
Mr. Kraus, you and I have discussed this at length.
Yes.
And just thinking about it, I think obviously we're growing, especially in this field. I think it would only be wise to hire a permanent individual. You and I haven't discussed it at this length. But in the immediate future, when you put this puzzle all together, I honestly believe you need somebody at the head of it. Focus their entire energy, not only on what we got, but capturing those grants moving forward. It's not going to miss out on something.
I still uh and and I agree with that statement. I still share the concern that is multiple, if these multiple projects hit at once and and and. In my commissary comments, I'm going to talk about a broadband initiative that that may even add more to that. That, you know, I would rather, even if we hire this person, not close the door on bringing in outside consultants to help to get this stuff through because I don't want to bog down. You know, like we have in the past on projects. I want to hit the gas and go, especially with this new funding we got.
Sir, I'm I'm not referring at all about like. Excusing consultants, but I'm talking about a coordinator dedicated to hundred percent of his he's your energy to doing just that.
And they would work with all the consultants to make sure it gets done.
Okay.
While while we're talking about this, oh. Counselor, do you, are are you going to be able to stay up with the contracts and the um and everything that's going on? Are you going? You are we are we going to need the help? I'm just saying, there's a lot coming down the pipe and you're a one man show, you know?
I'm not saying no to help ever, but uh no, I I think when those kind of issues have arisen in the past. You know, David and I have been quick to reach out to like Heather Ensignosa and and uh and you know. Evan Rosenthal, people like that. So we do have some people in the pipeline, but I think you're right. That's something we have to keep a pulse on. And I think to the point that's being made here in this discussion, that individual would be able to say, hey. This is a drop everything and go kind of thing. Can you do that? You know, um an example, Project Wave was a drop everything and go and we did it.
Yep.
Um but that's not, if if there's four or five of those that happen at once, no, the answer will start being no.
And that's and that's what I'm saying. I agree with Commissioner Whit. If we need to seek some outside help. On a contractual basis, we need to pursue that pursue that because like I said, there is. I'm like I said, well, I go, I'm excited. There's a lot of stuff fixing to happen in Columbia County and uh. And we need to make sure we're on top of it and we need to dot all of dot all our eyes and cross all of our teams on these grants. Make sure we close them out so we can apply for new ones, you know, at the time they're ready to go.
With respect to funding the utility infrastructure and uh and creating the MBSUs and things like that. I really believe we have one of the best people in the state on speed dial since in Heather Ensignosa.
Yeah.
So we feel really good about that, but there are going to be new challenges. I mean, the utility industry is its own separate animal. And there will be things that will come up and and believe it. David will tell, I'll be the first one to say, hey, that's outside my scope. So but I'll I'll definitely be attentive to that and I appreciate the thought, Commissioner.
Well, we're going to need your help on this. I just want, you know.
I'm with you.
It's going to take a big effort on everybody's part and pull all the results.
In addition, between what happens. Over the next course of the year, if you're building all these facilities this next year. In next year's budget, you can expect to see a utility department with additional staff.
Oh, that's 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 gotta happen, yeah.
Like Rocky says, it's going to start and it's going to roll and we don't want to have any, we don't want any any stoppages.
All right, let's move ahead.
So Kevin and I talked about, we have one year to build a utility department.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say it's a there's a lot, there's a lot fixing fixing to happen here, so.
So the next one is really just um. Paperwork. Um we have three grants that were outstanding at the end of the fiscal year, the EOC design, the Bell Street projects. And Burley Sidewalk, they were still had some outstanding bills at the end of the fiscal year. So we're asking you to approve Budget Amendment Twenty One Sixty Two, which will move the remaining balances into the current fiscal year so we can close out these grants and finish these projects.
Seven.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the next one is the ARPA update. And that may be somewhat of a misnomer, but it is an ARPA update. You have some data in your packet. Basically, we stopped accepting applications for business assistance because we were we're going to run out of money. You gave us a million dollars. Twenty-two businesses have already received four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars in assistance, which means we got about five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars left. But we have forty-seven applications that are still out there that could total nine hundred and seven eighty-seven thousand. But plus, we have not processed an additional twenty-eight applications. So what we're saying is. We think we're going to be short on the business side. If you want to fund everybody, we have two choices. We can just tell everybody when we run out of money, we run out of money, or we can increase the money. So we're asking to increase the ARPA budget. For business assistance by at least another one million, twenty-five thousand, one million for business assistance, twenty-five thousand to cover our costs of uh staffing. Um of the business assistance program. And then also, um this one's close to my heart. I I believe we need to. Do emergency home repairs to low income senior citizens' residents in the qualified census tracts, which is an ARPA eligible project. We have senior citizens who have. Critical emergency damages to their homes. They're senior citizens. They can't go out and get another job. They can't go out and get funding. If they're low income and they qualify, this would at least bring them up to a safe standard in their homes. This has been a perennial problem with our county. This would allow us to help them before the uh. The CDBG funds become available. So those are the two things that we're requesting.
Go ahead. Uh I I I I I I know this is a worthwhile uh request. We can see what we have done with the first part of that first meeting. We still have applicants out there that we carry on process, so. You know, I move to take staff recommendations, especially the part for senior citizens that cannot get a loan. Or or the income is not high enough to go out and repair a house that's living for them but needs repairs.
Second.
I move to take your recommendation.
I have a motion and a second for discussion, though. Do we want to set the limit at what we're putting on here now adding once we spend this one point? Two five million? Do we, this additional one point two five million? Do we want to cut it off at that point or is that part of, is that part of your request or?
So so would you?
If you approve the additional one point oh two five million, I still think you can't take any more applications.
So you would keep applications suspended, let let her work through what she's got and then see what she got left there.
Yeah.
What she got left.
Okay, I I I agree with that.
Because I mean, a a good portion of the rest of that ARPA is already dedicated.
Yeah.
Should we include that in the motion?
So so. Do we need to amend that motion?
No, I think it was understood.
Okay, uh we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
David, who administers and who oversees the uh? For the senior citizen upgrade to the homes? Who who's the overseer of that?
We're going to work with Geraldine on that as well. Uh Geraldine and Kim, we're we'll have to create criteria and we'll provide the same type of um documentation we would provide. We will be required to provide on the HUD grant when it comes through. To remind everybody in the public, the council, the commission has applied for a. CDBG grant for housing assistance prehabilitation um for seven hundred and fifty thousand. That comes with HUD requirements, income statements, the whole nine yards. So we'll have. The assistance of Guardian Community Resource, our manager on that project, help us. Create the criteria that we can also then apply to this. The key to this, though, is it's got to be in the qualified census tracts. Because ARPA specifically states has to be in the qualified census tract.
I think it's a a great opportunity and I know there's a lot of need there. Uh a lot of you local churches do a great job, but this is uh that this is money well spent. And uh I I just, when you get the, when you get the plan together, I I I'd ask that you bring it back sooner sooner than later. Uh you know, where at least the public can, you know, understand the expression where. They called me and I get it all backwards or something other because.
We'll bring it back at the December sixteenth meeting.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. I agree again.
Hey, great adjustments. Um as we are going through the um salary stuff. One of the problems we've always had with the library is the salary for librarians, which require master's degrees. The job pay grade doesn't match where you really need to be if you're going to hire people. So what we're asking is to adjust the pay grades for the librarian one, two, and three. And you can see where we're adjusting them from. And again, there won't be a cost to adjusting the pay grade because we're already adjusting the salaries anyway. We're just adjusting the pay grade to match where they need to be.
Move to.
Chair, I move in the second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So the next one is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is uh. We're getting to the point where we're buying houses. So you're getting to own all these houses and then the next step is we're going to have to tear down these houses. To buy all of the houses we have planned to buy, uh given that the. Valuations have gone up, uh we will fall short thirty thousand dollars. And so we're basically asking the board. To give us an additional thirty thousand dollars to put into the HMGP program by approving Budget Amendment Twenty Two Sixteen. This money that you're giving us will count towards our match that we are required to provide. So we would have to provide the match anyway.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And this person that we're talking about on this grant aspect, I mean, you've had this conversation a bunch.
Yes.
We need to dedicate somebody to oversee this. Well, we don't go through what these constituents been going through for the last six years. On this, on this mess right here.
So we're to the point now, once we close on these houses and most of the houses are in the process of being closed right now by Lake City Title. Uh once we close on all the houses, then it moves over and gets transitioned over to Mr. Kirby's shop. Uh and then the the board will have a choice. We can either contract out the demolitions or we can try and figure out how to do them in-house. So the last item I have is a service agreement renewal with Merchant McIntyre and Associates. This is that firm out of Washington DC. Uh you entered into agreement with them on for a short period of time at a rate of seven thousand five hundred per month. It has an automatic. Or has a renewal agreement that says if you wish to renew it, they will continue to work with us. So what they're proposing is to continue. Moving forward, uh providing our representation in Washington DC. And certainly if we come down to Washington DC, they will get us into people's offices to meet with the people who do the grant funding. Their are their top priorities are they've identified a total of twenty-five point three five million dollars of. Funding sources that would be a high priority for the county. Uh they want to immediately begin working with the DOT Consolidated Rail Infrastructure. And Safety Improvement Program. To look at funding a major rail project in the North Florida Mega Industrial Park. Um and again, because of economic development reasons, I can't get into too much details at this point in time. But this would be major funding from the fed directly from the federal government to help us with the intermodal facilities. At the North Florida Mega Industrial Park and build out the rail. Additionally, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, your motion is to renew this, right?
Yes, yes. Additionally, um federal governments are doing earmarks again. So they're proposing that they would prepare our earmarks and present them to both Representative Lawson and Representative Dunn. For next year's fiscal year budget, which would be in March sometime. Um for the general public that don't know what earmarks are. It is specific pieces of funding projects that get put into the federal budget. For a long time that was canceled. They began them again last year. So this will be the second year that they are doing earmarks again. So you can get specific projects put into the federal budget and funded directly through the federal government. And of course, you have to get that through your local representatives. Uh and both Representative Dunn and Lawson reached out to us last year and are very um excited to work with us. On these types of projects. And then finally, a one point two trillion dollar infrastructure package was just adopted, which everyone knows. Uh now it's the time to begin really. Understanding that legislation and going after the key target areas where we can get those funding. And so I'm recommending renewing this agreement so that they can help us target those DC funds, which we traditionally have not gone after.
But chairman, I move that we uh uh adopt this recommendation for another year to see what fruit we provide for.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No, you can't have enough of it.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, I guess we'll go into public comments at this time. Anybody want to come up and speak? Close public comments. Okay, staff, any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a comment.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I, I, I am very happy and pleased with the direction this board is taking towards economic development and making sure that we have the infrastructure in place in order to accommodate businesses when they want to locate in Columbia County. With the, with the action this board is taking, we will never lose another, uh, company. So we do not have the ability to provide the necessary infrastructure for them to locate in Columbia County. And this board ought to be commended for the steps that we have taken and the forward thinking that we are doing in order to assure that we look out the best interest for Columbia County, Columbia County citizens by providing the opportunity for businesses located in this county. And it, and you know, it is amazing, uh, the, uh, the economic development, uh, uh, group, uh, Glenn and his office is, uh, the people that they talked to six, seven years ago is finally coming back around and say, we want to look at Columbia County again. And we are in a better shape now to how they requesting we were back then. One company lost is one too many and we have positioned ourselves that we don't lose another company because we don't have the infrastructure to provide for it. And once again, I commend this board for stepping up to the plate, doing what, what, what we need to do to provide that service.
I echo, uh, Commissioner Williams. And I also, the thing in Fort White, I joke with you about Rocky, but that's a big deal. That's a big deal. Getting all that down there and, and getting what the future can be for the houses on the river and everything else. It, it really feels, today is one of the best days, one of the best feeling days I've been since I've been on the commission. It's a good feeling. Could you ate so much the day of Wednesday?
Yeah. When you weigh 280, you know?
Uh, board, uh, I'll just give you a short update. Myself and David were invited to a meeting, uh, Memorial Day, correct? Yeah, on Memorial Day, uh, relevant to, uh, some issues that, uh, Mr. Steve Brown with the city has put in place, uh, in providing, as Ron said, uh, uh, some possibilities of gas flow, uh, to the mega site. It was, I thought it was the greatest 30 minute meeting I've ever sat in. Uh, he, he fortunately went to a conference, being in the right place, right time, hooked up with the right people. Uh, it was a great, uh, uh, meeting and, uh, I think, uh, without boring you with a lot of details, I think here in the near future, we're gonna, we're gonna get some great results out of that. And I just did, give ditto's to Steve because he, uh, he took advantage of an opportunity and put one on one together and what'd he say? He left, he was painting a boat on this holiday off and come out here for that meeting. It, it was good and it was really, so I was told, uh, getting some positive feedback from that, uh, that meeting. It was, it was real good and, uh... And real fast, Joe, where do we stand, Joe, on the mitigation credit situation?
Y'all know our law firm changes there. Eric Olson is the attorney, uh, who'd been with Hopping Green and Sam's. He's now with the Gunster Law Firm. And the last conversation I had with him, uh, he was finalizing a settlement agreement. He was trying to hammer down some details from Chad in terms of what we'd actually spent on alternative mitigation. That number ended up being lower than we thought it was going to be, which was good. Uh, and my understanding is he's waiting for a go ahead from Mr. Oosterhouse attorneys on the proposal.
Okay.
But I'm, I, my, it's my hope that, that at the net, you know, at, at a meeting very soon, I'm going to be asking for a shade meeting.
Uh, just want to commend the economic development efforts going on. I'm really excited that, uh, of, of everything that's happening, this was a very, very great meeting. We got two or three things going on at one time, good news, and glad to see the intermodal part, uh, you know, being, uh, some, uh, our first tenant out there. I can, I always said, just by personal experience, once you get one, you know, break down to that one, there's more to follow. So I think we're going to have our work cut out for us. Um, in your consent agenda tonight, you approved out of number one, which is, uh, supporting state broadband efforts. I am your commissioner, you appointed as the, uh, they call us the champion of that cause. And, uh, we did attend a meeting at Florida Association of Counties. Um, our next step, uh, I will be on the next board agenda, uh, asking to appoint a committee of stakeholders. Um, and David, I'll get that information to you. Um, and, uh, I, I think the, the, probably the, the, the most prudent thing to do at the next meeting is to, uh, announce and make up that committee and then make up of that committee and then at the subsequent meeting, appoint them. That way commissioners have time to weigh in and bring some recommendations to me. Um, it's people like people involved in public safety, people involved in the school system. Uh, there's about nine or 10 recommendations on how to form that committee and, uh, and we'll move forward there. It's also clear and want to commend this board, I think it was very wise to hold off, uh, on using ARPA fund for broadband because it is now very clear to us that there is going to be separate, uh, funds available and plenty of them for broadband of what they're telling us that meeting was correct. So, um, you know, we have a, as big as a utility project is, I'm not saying this one is as big, as big, but we have, uh, uh, our work cut out for us here too. But I think this time, uh, we're, we really had the possibility in the next, you know, few years of ensuring that every house in the county has a viable broadband in one way or another.
Toby, in y'all's meeting over there on this, uh, issue, did they make recommendations of, uh, public being involved in these committees?
Yeah, they, they, there's pretty much a guidebook that, you know, uh, there, there are, there are some general public guidelines for who's on the committee, but it's pretty much everybody who has a vested interest, you know, um, in it. So, and, and, you know, my personal opinion, I mean, I've been at Florida Association of Counties following this for a while and I, I've seen other counties who've jumped out there and, and already done projects. Um, I think they're actually, you know, getting the cart for the horse because I don't think the solution's going to be to contract with company A and say, you've got it. I think just the solution's going to be, you know, we're going to use this form here and this form here and this form here. I mean, uh, the low orbit satellite stuff is, is very promising. What's beautiful about that is you just, you know, you just give it and send it to the homeowner to buy the equipment. They buy the, they buy the equipment and, and there's no infrastructure. I mean, and it's not like the satellite broadband that's out there right now. This is low orbit stuff that's actually faster, as fast as fiber or faster. So, um, uh, and there's a lot of government money being pumped to that. So I mean, if that works out to me, you know, I, I, I think the fiber companies may be in trouble. So, I mean, we're, we're, we were wise to kind of hold off, I think, and, and, and take a step back because we're going to get a lot more information in the future, but I really think that problem is going to be solved and there's going to be money to solve it.
I like to say, I think we put the right man on the job for the, uh, internet. Uh, and David, I want to give you a compliment. I think you've done a great job this year.
Thank you.
Um, you've got a lot of things happening. I think you have a great vision of the future too for Columbia County. And, uh, I just want to say I appreciate what you've done as far as the grants and stuff. And, uh, and, um, Mr. Kirby's input on all this and, uh, I'd say, I think, uh, I think y'all are a big part of what's going on and I think without y'all, we would probably not have as, be as successful as we are. So, uh, I just want to compliment y'all.
Thank you very much.
It's me like Rocky's working on a free quail hunter, nothing.
Already got.
We, we appreciate, we appreciate Mr. Kirby when he's not fishing. When he, when he's not fishing or quail hunting, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
But it is all about teamwork.
I'd appreciate if he'd share some of them fishing numbers.
Oh, so, uh...
Y'all all have a good Thanksgiving.
I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, uh, the dinner was great today. Well, I'll tell you what, I don't even know if I can eat any dinner tonight.
I'd just like to say, I think we're getting our money's worth on this interim, uh, person agent. Man, he's been sitting back here in that meeting, he, he's, it's all right. That's first time we seen that.
Yeah.
He's not even charging you.
Mike's looking for a bonus or something, isn't he?
Mike, you're doing a great job. He's a better man than me. And I get a motion for adjournment. We adjourn.
Third.
Yes, I want...